If you will please rise for the pledge and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Turner?
Mayor, City Council, and citizens of Allen Park. Just want to extend our condolences from the Allen Park Chaplaincy Corps to this mayor, the city, and its residents on the loss of former mayor Tony Lally. Let's pray together. Almighty God, we pause to pay you reverence. You've written it upon our hearts, but you've also shared it in the pages of Scripture, that which is good. And for countless ages, you have toned men, women, boys, girls, especially governments that have given oversight to kingdoms all over the world. What you expect of us, what you require. And you require that we do justly, that we love mercy, and that we walk humbly with our God. We thank you, Almighty God, that we have a demonstration of that in Madam Mayor McLeod and this City Council, our law enforcement and police departments here in this great city of Allen Park. May you use us as a beacon light to the rest of the world that they might emulate the good government that we have here. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
The roll, please. Of course, Councilman Lloyd. I have both Councilman Schleck and Councilman Barr excused. Councilman Marcos?
Here.
Councilman Valerius?
Here.
Mayor Protem Nick?
Here.
Also excuse Treasurer Estimer and Mayor McLeod.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Nick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Any changes, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of February 11?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Before we move on to organizational business, I would like to let everyone know that I gavelled this evening's meeting to order with a different gavel. I was in my office looking at a box that was there. This gavel was given to me by Mr. Lally when I was first elected mayor. He came in and presented me with a gavel with my name on it, and I am very thankful for that. And I wanted to recognize that tonight. But moving on to something that's more uplifting is a proclamation. And we will celebrate one of our residents who will be 104 years old on Thursday. Honoring John Williams on his 104th birthday. Whereas John Williams will be honored by family and friends on the occasion of his 104th birthday on February 27, and whereas he was born in Emporia, Kansas on February 27, 1921, the oldest of nine children, and moved to Michigan as a three-year-old; and whereas he served in the Navy and survived the Japanese attack on Pearl Harbor and returned to Michigan with his two children as a widower; and whereas he has been blessed with two granddaughters, great-grandchildren, and many nieces and nephews; and whereas he worked for Great Lakes Steel for 34 years until his retirement and served for more than 63 years as the deacon at his church, Whitlock Memorial Church of God and Christ. It is appropriate to publicly recognize Mr. Williams for his service to his country and also congratulate him on the occasion of his 104th birthday. Now therefore, I, Mayor Gail McLeod, on behalf of the city of Allen Park and all of its elected officials, do hereby deem it an honor and pleasure to recognize and congratulate John Williams on reaching 104 years of age, wish him the very best in the coming year, and thank him for his service. In witness whereof, I do hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Allen Park, Michigan, to be affixed this 25th day of February 2025. And I will be presenting this to Mr. Williams on Wednesday, when Maple Heights celebrates all of the birthdays at their facility for February. And I will pass along your good wishes to him. We will now move on to the City Treasurer's report. And I will, in Mr. Estimer's absence, be putting on a different hat, so I will sit here, but not over there. Mr. Estimer would like me to mention that we are now past the due date, which was February 14, for payment of your property taxes. You may still pay your taxes to the city of Allen Park until the 28th, which is this Friday, with a 3% penalty. After Friday, these taxes are automatically turned over to the county for collections, and you will need to follow up with the county for payment. And the other thing that Tim has asked me to do is to pass along his condolences to the Lally family. I think he has done that personally, but he wanted to communicate it here also. Now we will move on to the Administrator's report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, fellow residents. Spring hockey will be starting at the arena in this March. It's supposed to go till May, when they take the ice up. Ripple Fiber has consistently been meeting with our DPS and our Building Department to keep us abreast of their progress in implementing their fiber optics in the city. They are hoping their installation will be completed by the end of May this year, just to give you guys an idea of when they're hoping to be done with this. The DDA will also be hosting a Small Business Administration breakfast on March 4 at the Prestige Banquet Hall. And spring is almost here. Daily Savings Time will take place on March 9. Don't forget to spring forward and adjust your clocks. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept and file the Administrator's report?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. When we come to public comments, all we need is your name and the street on which you live. Please do not give your full address. Four minutes, and the only other thing we ask is that you be civil.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor. Ray Mcgusson Quant. Yesterday, we lost a friend. The Lallys lost a grandfather, a father, and a friend. But this city lost a lot. We lost a vet. We lost a gentleman that put his heart and soul into this city, who worked diligently for every one of our citizens. He worked at the street fair. He worked at Cabrini's Festival for many, many years. He worked at the Knights of Columbus for I don't know how many years. He was our mayor. He was a Mayor Protem. He was a City Councilman. But not only that is, he was our friend. When this happens to us, it makes us think how short life really is. You can all close your eyes now, and you can see Tony walking around with his little smile, always asking, "Can I help you? Is there anything I can do for you?" I want to thank you, Tony, for doing what you did. I know there's many, many more hard-working individuals within our city. But I knew Tony for many, many years. And with that, all I have to say is, you'll be missed by many of us, especially your family. But you know what, Tony? We were your family, and you know that. With that, have a great day.
Charles Bland champagne. Just like Ray said, we lost a good friend. When I found out this morning, it just really hit me. Thinking about all the memories of the last four years, at the last council we had with him, the events, the bike parade, the wanting to make sure that the memorial for the veterans down by Thunderbolt Lanes area. I could literally hear him saying, "Charlie!" I just could hear it. And just, it's like there's Tony, Charlie, Matty, Dennis, everything. Just, and we always would laugh whenever we had our meeting, and you knew Tony was coming because the Godfather ringtone was going off because he was the Godfather. And I always, every time, I'd be like, "Oh, take the cannoli. Don't get the horse head or anything like that." But I just, you have to keep remembering those great memories, the fun memories. Like Ray said, he was such a great volunteer with street fair, always wanting to help out. And it's like, whether you agree with the politics or anything like that, he was just a wonderful friend. It's like, my heart goes out to his family, Maria, being a great dad, husband, grandpa, just all the times, just thinking about those, again, memories. Again, like Ray said, life's too short, and why always, you always say, "Stay positive" and just try to think the good in everyone. It's, can't like fight as much, like, just, life is too short, and he will be missed. And it's, it's like, sorry. It's, it just, he gone too soon. It just, but I hope everyone, again, thinks his family, and then just remember all the good things he's did for this wonderful city. And God bless and rest in peace to Tony. Thank you.
There's no one else coming forward. We will close public comments and move on to the consent agenda, which tonight consists of claims and accounts in the payroll report. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Second by Ms. Nick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's approved. Resolution, Resolution 1, to approve the fiscal year '25-'26 budget timeline for the adoption of the budget in May 2025. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Nick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Any comments or questions? I think everyone's got the timeline, and we are all aware that our work session in May will encompass review of that budget. If there's no questions, we will move on. Last for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is passed. Resolution 2, to approve the Building Department's request to raise the minimum fee for a building permit from $85 to a new rate of $100 and adopt the added line items and adjustments in the building, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing permits. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius, second by Mr. Lloyd.
Can I ask a question on that? I apologize for being tardy, so I didn't catch this. Does that new rate take place immediately, or is it with the new budget?
It'd be immediately.
Immediately, okay.
Mr. Baker?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. The Building Department's asking, or proposing these fee adjustments with the building permits, mechanical permits, electrical permits, and plumbing permits. We, for the two, mechanical and electrical, we added some line items and clarified some items to make things easier for the contractor, the homeowner, and the inspector. Also with plumbing inspection fees, we did raise, I believe, four line items, just to get them up to par with other communities. And it also does help with paying the inspectors about, we have three independent contracting inspectors, and these fees also help pay them to do these inspections. The other fee increase was, we have a minimum currently of $85 minimum permit fee. I'd like to raise that to $100, and mostly that'll impact two building permits, the really zoning permits, which would be flat work, which is cement work, which would be patios, driveways, sidewalks, and fences. Both of those require two inspections, a rough inspection and a file inspection, so it'll cover all the inspection costs as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. And we move on to other business, which, our first one is the Third Reading and Public Hearing of Proposed Ordinance Number 2-2025. May I have a motion for the Third Reading and Public Hearing?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Ms. Nick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Mr. Kovir, Third Reading, please.
The Third Reading of Proposed Ordinance 02-2025, an ordinance of City of Allen Park, Code of Ordinances, Amending Chapter 52, Zoning, Article 3, District Regulations, by the repeal and readoption of Sections 52-239, 52-271, 52-305, 52-374, 52-370, excuse me, 52-387, and 52-541, to update the sections. And now we can do...
We will open up public hearing.
We, so, to the chair.
Yes.
This was, we did the first and second reading of this last week. This was what we were appealing. So making it so that, Joe, could you, it had to do with the parking spaces, if you remember when we talked about this at last meeting. So it basically gives it, the Planning Commission, more leeway to approve. And like the example we talked about is like, so each business has to have a set amount of parking spaces, a set amount of width, but not all parking, not all businesses, like we use the example of a daycare, need to necessarily have that many spaces. So this just gives the Planning Commission more flexibility to be able to make those decisions, so they don't need to necessarily have to go to the zoning board of appeals. Is that more or less? Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it.
Exactly.
You were mentioning the repeal and readoption. You mentioned 52-387, but I'm here, unless I heard it wrong. It's, I'm here, it's 386.
Yeah, I did that to make sure you're paying attention.
I am.
Very good. Thank you for pointing that out.
Is anyone coming up for public hearing?
But this went through the Planning Commission as well as Legal Affairs, as well as this body, and it just gives, it makes it more efficient for people to develop in our city.
Well, if no one's coming up for public comments, we will close public comments, and I will ask for a motion to adopt Ordinance 2-2025.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, we will take a roll call vote.
Mayor Protem Nick?
Yes.
Councilman Lloyd?
Yes.
Mayor McLeod?
Yes.
Councilman Valerius?
Yes.
Councilman Marcos?
Yes.
The ayes have it.
Thank you. Need a motion to approve the Third Reading and Public Hearing for Proposed Ordinance 3-2025?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Ms. Nick. Comments or questions? Hearing none, Mr. Kovir?
Ordinance 03-2025, an ordinance of City of Allen Park, Code of Ordinances, Amending Chapter 6, Animals, Article 1, in general, by the repeal and readoption of Section 6-21, Feeding of Wild Animals and Birds Prohibited, Except to Feeding of Birds and Squirrels by Means of an Elevated Feeder, to adopt a new section prohibiting the feeding of pigeons and seagulls, and to regulate ground feeding of wild animals.
Go ahead, Matt.
Again, this is looked at in Legal Affairs. The prior verbiage, I guess, in the ordinance made it virtually unenforceable, the way it was prior written, and thanks to the work of our ordinance officer, we just kind of went back through it and reworded things. We had residents building troughs that basically met the ordinance as it was wording prior, but they were basically feeding troughs that were 48 inches above the ground, that you could dump as much bird seed in, in feeding not just birds, but all the other neighboring varmints and everything else. So again, I signed out with our ordinance officer, we just restructured language to make it more enforceable, I guess.
That is correct. That's correct.
You know, I think, I feel like I'll take a vote on that. Do we take a vote?
Well, anyone, any other comments? Still our public hearing?
Ray Mcgusson Quant? Question. Are we trying to say that if we have an elevated feeder, that we're in compliance?
Well, I think you need to be very specific. We need to look at the ordinance.
Well, let's look at the ordinance.
So...
Because I don't see it.
It's in the, it's a...
I don't get, I don't look at the pack side.
Yeah, here it is. I can, I can read it. But not only is it elevated, it has to be, there are certain size restrictions.
Yep.
For feeding.
Only have an opening no greater than two inches wide, hold no more than two pounds of bird feed, elevated at least 48 inches above ground level, and it must be designed to prevent feed or seed from falling to the ground, and prohibit access by other wild animals as well.
So that means any, any kind of bird feeder that I go out to the store right now is not going to be in compliance with this ordinance?
Most of the bird feeders that you can buy at any store will meet that compliance.
I'm sorry, but I got bird feeders up north, and I guarantee you, my birds do not keep the seeds from hitting their ground, and they definitely don't allow the squirrels to, cannot, do not look at that. They just grab and they run.
Well, this ordinance does not say that if, if you had a lawful feeder and the seeds fell on the ground, that's not a violation.
Yeah, because really, when they fall on the ground, they're already...
Because I mean, there's no way to prevent that. That's just going to happen.
Joe, Mayor, through the chair, okay? I'm just bringing up a couple of things, okay? That's all I'm up here asking.
No, no, it's good you're asking, and we're trying to answer you, right? Would you like to look at this?
Mayor, through the chair, through Joe, okay? All I'm doing, Joe, is up here trying to make sure that when the ordinance officer doesn't come to our neighbors, and he says, "Well, look at all the seed that's on the ground," that they're not, they're going to sit there and says, "Well, you're in direct violation of our ordinance," because that's sure what it sounds to me like.
Okay, so, yeah, we can go through a few hypotheticals, but if there are seeds on the ground and there is no feeder above it, that's going to be a problem.
No, I didn't say that, Joe. I says, if there's a feeder up in the air and the seed is on the ground, because I just heard from Mr. Valerius, that the feeder must be able to maintain from not allowing the seeds to hit the ground.
It's designed to prevent...
Prevent feed and seed from falling to the ground.
Well, that's what I'm trying to say.
So I think that, so, Matt...
Joe?
Again, designed to do that, all right? I, I do not think our ordinance officer is going to go out there and make sure below a feeder everything's, you know, broom clean.
That's all I'm up here asking, okay? You see what I'm trying to say?
Again, this kind of stemmed from multiple complaints from an individual in the city who had built a...
A few things.
A few things. Who had built basically a feeding trough that could hold 25 to 30 pounds of feed, and there was a lot of incidences throughout the neighborhood of birds crapping all over cars, rats, other animals, and basically the way it was written prior, he was in full compliance and nothing could be enforced. So something had to be done to kind of change things, to make sure that feeding troughs weren't being used to feed all the varmints throughout the entire neighborhood.
I, I understand what some of the questions that you're asking, and I think part of it is with the two inches wide and it's designed to, I think that, because I, I understand what you're, what you're getting to. I think that a lot of times when you're using proper feeders and you're not distributing, you are, what falls to the ground isn't necessarily seed, it's shells, depending on what you feed the birds. And there are systems wherein I feed birds and I have a tray, and there's a tray that catches everything and nothing hits the ground.
Really, the, I mean...
But what you're trying to avoid is somebody dumping a 10-pound bag, and it's just open. You're going to get some, I think you're, you're going to get some side effects, and squirrel gets in there, he pokes his finger, you're going to get some seed. But I think what you're looking at, Ray, is you're trying to prevent someone from doing a wholesale dump of seed, which is going to attract your rodents.
I'm just up here trying to make sure that my citizens and my neighbors don't have an ordinance officer sitting there saying, "Hey..."
I'm with you.
I, I think he's fairly busy that, you know, I don't think he's going to be staking out bird feeders. But again, the idea is there's certain attributes of ground feeding, or when you have a lot of seed in a flat area, which attracts a lot of pigeons...
And rats.
A lot of rats, a lot of those type of vermin. So, you know, we draft an ordinance, there's no such thing as a perfect ordinance. I mean, we, you know, we go through this, we try to look at all the different variables. I can't predict, you know, we can't predict what every kind of bird's going to do and how seeds are going to fall. But, but it is designed, I'll let Matt say that, but it is designed that generally, you know, your general commercial feeder, you know, the residential feeders that you can find are permitted.
Yeah, because, because the residential feeders do, are designed to prevent feed or seed from falling to the ground. That's exactly how it's worded. It doesn't say anything about absolutely no seeds will fall to the ground. It just says you need to have a feeder with, that is designed to prevent feed or seed from falling to the ground. That is the exact wording there.
Yes, I have no issue with that whatsoever. Okay? My only issue is if the ordinance officer comes and there's seeds on the ground, that he's not going to go ahead and nail one of our citizens.
No, because he'll look, he'll look up.
So it sounds like he won't be, okay?
Well, and again...
And we can talk about a lot, but I'm going to tell you what. I have a picture right now in my camera that up north... that up north, I went out there and guess what was inside my bird feeder? A chipmunk.
Oh, yeah.
Now, I have the picture. He, he actually drilled a hole right through the plaster, got inside there and he got, and he was stuck. Now, I have it. I can show you. It's funny.
I bet. Is he alive or dead?
He was live. He was, but he, guess what? There was no bird feed left. Okay? I, I never seen it in my entire life. I'm just saying. I ha- I'll show you. Hey, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ray.
No one else is coming up? We will close public hearing and move on to the adoption of ordinance number three dash twenty-twenty-five. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please. Councilman Lloyd.
Yes.
Mayor McLeod.
Yes.
Councilman Valerius.
Yes.
Councilman Marcos.
Yes.
Mayor Protemnik.
Yes.
The A's have it. Thank you. We will now move on to elected officials' comments. Ms. Lovelock.
Um, so unfortunately, Mr. Mizzi, uh, was unable to be here tonight, so I would like to speak on his behalf and my behalf in saying, uh, our thoughts and prayers go out to the Lally family. Um, he was definitely a friend to the city of Allen Park and our thoughts and prayers are with him.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Lloyd.
Um, there's a, so, there's two thoughts about Tony, um, came up as I was, uh, as I was driving, um, into council today. One thing is, is, uh, same, same as, as Charles, I, I can, I can hear him saying it. I said, how's your grandma doing? Every single time, every single time. Um, you know, he, he knew my grandma from around town, he knew her from church. He mainly knew her as a fellow Italian immigrant, like, you know, and I think that there's a certain camaraderie amongst immigrants that gone, went through that experience and, um, and he, he never failed, never failed. We sat next to each other for four years. Every single time we sat next to each other, every time I saw him at a street fair or out in public, um, he, he would always, always ask about my grandma. Uh, the other thought is, is that if you ever had the good fortune to go behind his garage, is where he had his wine making setup. Um, is small, small shed, um, you know, with, but it had everything you want, he had his TV in there, had his whole setup. And, uh, he took me back there one time when we were having a couple, uh, glasses of wine and I mentioned that it was, uh, the family giving me the responsibility in Thanksgiving to, to get, uh, the wine, because nobody trusts me to cook. And, uh, he's like, oh, okay, and then I'm walking out of there with a box full of, uh, full of Tony's wine and, uh, as we were sitting at Thanksgiving, everyone's like, hey, give me some of that Tony Lally wine. Um, and, uh, does make me very sad that I'll, uh, I'll never have that again. Uh, he was a, this is, uh, it's an interesting thing, Charles knows it, and it's an interesting thing sitting up here because, uh, you end up talking to each other a lot because we, we have, we have to. We have to figure out these problems together, we have to figure out where we think on things and go through these things and, and we, we go through crises together and, and we have celebrations together and it's, uh, it's difficult to do that without building a sense of closeness and, um, yeah, I served with him, absolutely, but, uh, Tony Lally was my friend. He was a true asset to the city. He never hesitated to volunteer, um, for anything. He was always the first person to put his, uh, name in the ring. Um, and, you know, when it, when it came to public service, he put his money where his mouth is. He, he ran for elections and, you know, didn't always come up for him, but, you know, he, he went out there and he, he said what he believed and, and he always did what he thought was best for the city and, uh, we are all in his debt. We're all in his debt. And, uh, so every time I sit up here, I'll definitely be thinking about Tony. Thank you so much. I yield.
Ms. Nick.
I just wanted to, um, congratulate John Williams and I say a happy birthday to a hundred and four, a hundred and four. Wow, that's great. Um, and then, um, just wanted to say the Elks are having a garage sale on, um, March eighth. They lost their refrigerator, so they are trying to, um, raise money. So they did sell all their tables, so if anybody's around, um, March eighth, which is a Saturday, please stop by the Elks and, um, and help them at their garage sale. And as you're leaving tonight, if you can look at the showcase, the historical museum put in which typewriters, which, um, I remember having one of those electric ones in college many years ago, but, um, I think it's, um, reading month and so they have some old books and the typewriters up there, so, you know, see that when you go out and, um, I was with Tony and his wife Maria on Friday night. They were getting, I work at Henry Ford Museum and they were getting their membership um, that night and so they had come up and Charlie, they were looking for you, told me you didn't start until midnight, so, um, but I recently hurt my back in an elevator and, um, it dropped a floor, but, so I'm on a cane, but Tony wanted to make sure that I got to my car okay. So he walked me to my car. Um, so he will sadly be missed. Thank you. I yield. Thank you.
Matthew?
Yeah, Dan and I was invited out to that wine thing too and I don't even drink wine. But I drank wine with Tony that night because I just didn't want to, uh, upset him, so. I was thinking about and looking at my computer for a bunch of different prayers to say and everything else and I decided just to wing it and type something out myself, so. Power heads and pray. Lord, who are we to question you and your will? We are blessed with the life granted to us by birth, by the birth, the suffering and dying of your son, Jesus Christ. We are blessed with all that we have, family, friends, and life eternal. Lord, we thank you for Tony Lally. We thank you for the time you shared and his presence and for the remarkable man you bless so many of us with. Tony followed in your footsteps and served others throughout his life. He served everyone and fought for the freedoms we have and those we take for granted as a soldier in the jungles of Vietnam. He continued serving as a public servant in the roles of city councilman, the mayor, and Mayor Protem of Allen Park. Always giving so much to the city and community he called home. Lord, we ask that you watch over your humble servants, family, and friends as they mourn this loss and celebrate everything that Tony shared in his time with us all. Tony, my friend, I'll miss your phone calls and our conversations. I will miss your guidance and inspiration. I will miss your beaming smile and good-natured sense of humor. And I will miss all these things and so much more. I thank you for the opportunity to know you, to serve with you, and to pray with you. The void created by your departure can only be filled with the memories we shared in your presence. Rest in peace, my friend. I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Marcos.
Um, every, reiterating everything with everybody, Tony was a unique individual. Not only served as city, state, and his country, but anybody who walked down the street. And, and what everybody said is absolutely accurate about him. He's the first one to say yes, first one to say, I'll help, first one to say, I'll do it. And as far as, um, being missed, huge hole in the city. Condolences to the family. I know Tony will be in a good place. He's a good man and we will miss him sorely. So, I don't wanna end it like that. Um, but I do wanna, I have to put in my two cents here. February twenty-fifth, today, National Chocolate Covered Nut Day. National Clam Chowder Day. My favorite, National Rubber Ducky Day. Try to lighten up the mood just a little. Uh, anyhow, thank you, Tony, for always being there. And rest in peace. I yield.
Thank you. It's a, it's a funny thing, um, you, uh, get unexpected news. Wasn't, um, maybe but a couple of weeks ago I bumped into him and as usual, big smile and I always got a hug from him, which I appreciated. Um, you start looking around remembering things. Like I say, I was in the office today and I saw this and I thought I should use it once because it meant a lot to me, uh, him coming in and doing that for me when I was first elected. I think I posted that, um, he and I were at an MML conference together and, um, he attended every session I went to. Uh, he was there for breakfast, he was there for lunch, he was waiting for me in the hallway, you know, where do we go next? And I, I so appreciated that. I appreciated the times when he would come in and ask how I was doing and would tell me, I got your back, and I knew he had my back. Um, and then, uh, another little thing, you mentioned the street fair and I remember a couple of years ago, sitting in the information booth and of course, we've got all these papers and things to hand out, hand out, excuse me. And, uh, there's wind and then things are blowing around. I said, well, Tony, you know, if you can find something to hold these down. So he, he goes wandering off and you don't see him for a little while and expect him to come back with some rocks or bricks. Oh, no, here comes this man with a bag full of, uh, Senate candles. He went to, he went to the vendors, one of the vendors, and he got about six or seven Senate candles so that every council member could have one when, when the street fair was over and these, these were the weights he brought to, to hold down the papers. But, um, it's little things you remember that, that should make you smile. His, um, his hats. He always, he always had great hats. He'd come in with great hats, it's like, dapper, I think is the word, that, that I would associate with him. Just a very warm, friendly person. Um, a good heart and a good soul. And true, he's left too soon. And I know how much he loved his family and he's gonna be missed by, by many, many people and I'm very touched to have heard some of the personal comments from my fellow council members. Know that I appreciate you too. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Marcos. Second by Mr. Valerius. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. We are adjourned at, uh, six forty-two.